Welcome everybody to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Do we have any public comments?
We do, we have three registered for the Hidden Lakes item.
Okay, we'll wait just a few moments till we get to that, uh, that item. Is that the only three we have registered then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, items to be placed on our regular city commission agenda, commissioners, it's the minutes from our June nineteenth study session. Would you have a chance to review those? Any things that you'd like to change or any, we get to go to put those on the agenda for? Sometime in July.
Yep.
The fifth July meeting.
The next July meeting. Okay, great. That's what we'll do. Thank you. All right, items for presentation and discussion. Uh, item A is a Hidden Lakes subdivision, phase one final plat with Jenna Hillier. Good afternoon, Jenna.
Oh, we are presenting the final plat to Hidden Lakes subdivision. Uh, you have seen this before. We brought it to you in January to, uh, for the variance, to improve the variance. Um, the extension of nineteenth street into the new subdivision is a forty-three foot width instead of the sixty-foot that is required. So that was seen by you and improved then. Um, so this is the final plat since that variance has been approved. You click on here. Okay, so this is our, uh, since its location, it's at the intersection of Princeton and nineteenth street. Um, and it is zoned R two. Uh, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but the, the orange block there is the part that is the new subdivision. They do own that entire portion. This is phase one. Um, there's plans to develop the, the rest of that parcel of land. This, the one that they're looking at now to develop is nine, about nine acres. Uh, they're planning to put, uh, this consists of twenty-five lots, twenty-four, which are going to be single-family residential use. There's an additional tract for common use. Uh, the plat includes a public street construction, dedication, renewed new utilities, sidewalk, street lighting, and stormwater collection management. Um, go ahead and put the next one. This is the variance that you did see before. They're highlighted in blue. Uh, that's the extension of nineteenth street and the forty-three foot width there. Um, this illustrates, uh, the, the layout, uh, the new streets that are going to be put in as well as the, the, um, the tracks for the new houses. Um, you can go ahead and go to the next one, please. Thank you. This is the original, so this was introduced. Uh, we Belmont Development Company added an informal, uh, meeting with the neighborhood in October to present the plan to them. Uh, there was public feedback then, uh, we did have a public hearing, uh, in December. And there were several comments that came back and concerns from the public, uh, about stormwater runoff affecting the neighborhood. Also, uh, concerns that the intersection at nineteenth street in Princeton was already dangerous. This would increase the, um, the traffic concern that they have there. Also, uh, they did not, uh, they did not approve of the intersection, uh, as it was originally proposed. Um, and also property owners to the north and south, um, were going to be impacted by the extension of nineteenth street. So this is the original stormwater plat that was presented to us. Uh, there were minor changes that have been made. You can go ahead and go to the next one, please. Um, and this is designed with, um, um, I'm sorry. These are not necessarily my words. We have people here who can, uh, from the, the development company that can also answer questions if we have any. Um, but there are minor changes made between the preliminary plat and final. Um, the, the changes match the most recent revision of the drainage report that the city engineer has reviewed. Um, the rate of water leaving the site will match the current conditions. Uh, so it's not going to be any different the way that they have it designed with underground pipes and the, uh, concrete canals all directing it into the drainage, uh, the drainage pond, retention pond, I'm sorry. Um, and then it will be released, kind of controlled release back out. So the release of that water won't change what's, what's currently happening there. Um, you have any questions on this part?
Where, where does the release water go from there? Is it?
It releases to the north.
To the north. And then to the east or does it eventually go east at that point? Or it just goes north?
I'm not sure. I know it goes north, so I don't know where it goes from there.
Okay, I'm curious. Okay.
But I can find that out where you come back with more.
I think it's that drainage swirl to the north and then back into, uh, the pond. And over here flows this way.
I'm glad you're, that's kind of why I find it very dry.
Yeah.
Back, yeah, something again. Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you, Matt. Almost there. Thank you. This is the original intersection plan. Um, there is highlighted in blue. The plan was to originally to block off, uh, that, that portion of Princeton, um, with the barricade. Uh, there were some current concerns from the public about that, how that would affect, um, their access to their property. Um, and so in the next slide is the most recent revision of, um, of the plan. This has been, uh, worked out with Public Works Streets and the developer. And what this has them doing, there's, there's a portion that's going to be removed and replaced with grass to, and this is going to be one-way. So the northbound traffic will be able to enter that way, but won't be able to exit. And there'll be signage on the south. Um, so indicates, so lets people know this is not, this is only a one-way. Um, there's a strip of concrete that will be removed and replaced with grass to further, um, make people aware that this is a one-way street. And that should have a better impact. So we're still working out some of the details, I believe, but that is the current plan. This is a slide, um, there are yellow boxes there. These are the two property owners that will be impacted by nineteenth street extension and the construction. Uh, Belmont Development has been in contact with these two property owners and is working out an arrangement with them on how to resolve those and make sure that, um, is, uh, no harm is done essentially. That it's put back in a way that is so that they can access their property. It may not be exactly the same, but I, we don't have the details of what has been worked out with the neighbors, the property owners. Um, so this was reviewed by Planning Commission on June fourteenth. Uh, they accepted staff findings and there was a vote of six-zero approval to move the final plat to City Commission for approval. And if you have any questions, we do have, um, some city staff here. Uh, our engineer is on vacation or he would be here, but we do also have the development company who are willing to, uh, answer any questions. He may have as well.
And the one-way will be going north on that short Princeton Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
That'd be okay. Makes sense.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jenna? The development company or any of our staff? Yeah. So we'll go to public comments. Uh, let me read this paragraph first. Subject to the above restrictions, persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as the agenda item is called. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of, of the city commission may do so at this time when called upon the mayor. Comments on personnel matters and matter spending in court or with any other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for informational purposes only. The governing body will take comments under advisement. Who's our first public comment?
Gary Harris.
Gary, you want to come up, please? State your name for the record, please.
Thank you.
Gary Harris, eighteen oh one South Princeton.
What you got for us, Gary?
Okay, first off, I want to thank Genna Starb and his people for the work they did on straightening out the nineteenth street intersection with Princeton Street. It wasn't exactly what I wanted, but it's a compromise that I think everybody can live with. I know Dennis' people spent a lot of time on that. Um, I'll jump ahead to the, uh, stormwater issue. I realize that, uh, the civil engineer for Belmont has got a college degree and he's got computers to work with. And I realize that the city engineer has the same. However, I've got a lifetime, which is more years than I care to admit at this point, of doing site and civil work, utility, stormwater management, soil conservation management. That goes way back. Plus, I've got twenty-one, almost twenty-one years living in there watching this stormwater. None of these folks have actually visited the site to see what happens when it rains. Now, we discussed in the last meeting, there's two of you here that are contractors. I know you've looked at blueprints and engineers make mistakes. Uh, like I said, I've got a lot of years doing this, plus watching their stormwater. They're wrong. Point blank, they're wrong. Every square foot of roof, pavement, sidewalk that goes in there is a nice square foot of saturation for that water to get into the soil. It's going to speed the water up getting to us when it comes across our property. And with the discharge that they've got coming out of their pond, it ain't going to slow it down. It's that simple. As far as they said that they had met with, uh, or Belmont said that they'd met with the neighboring property owners. We discussed this briefly in the last study session where this was talked about. They didn't. They had a couple that they said showed up, uh, at the study session where this was the planning commission study session where this was discussed. I point blank asked them, how did you contact the property owners? Never got a straight answer. And they indicated they would be having a follow-up meeting with all the neighboring property owners that were affected. That hasn't happened. They indicated at the last planning commission meeting that, uh, if there was any money in the budget left over, they would see what they could do about addressing the stormwater. Well, I've never seen one of these projects that actually came in under budget. It, it doesn't happen. I, two separate options in which I was willing to participate in the, uh, installation um, and the cost of it. I haven't gotten an answer back on where the other one. Does that mean my time's up? Yes. Do I need to shut up?
Well, not, not to say it that way, but yes, your time is up. Gary, thank you.
I got, I got more.
Appreciate your comments. Who's our next?
Karen Harris.
Karen, come on up, please. State your name for the record.
Karen Harris, eighteen oh one South Princeton Street. Um, so I, I too am concerned this company came to us from our state. They have life when the word go. So like we talked about, there was no October meeting that they notified the homeowners on. We are the, the, one of the biggest affected. You would have thought that they would come and knock on our door. They did not. Um, I am concerned also about the traffic side that was done. Planning Commission was also not comfortable, but I will say I was a bit mean. And the chair and the Mr. Hall did push it through and the committee was not, or the commission was not comfortable with it. Uh, we asked for a fence because the trash, we get trash from Walmart, we get trash from all kinds of places. We said, you know, we have a fence that would catch the trash. And then said, well, we'll see if it's in the budget. But then they did, the planning commission did ask them to make sure that that happens and they said that they would do, but nothing's in writing. So I don't know what's going to happen. Um, and we are concerned about the, the flooding. So we are the entire north side of where these houses are going to be. Uh, like my husband said, we have lived there for twenty, almost twenty-two years. Um, the street is very narrow and there's a, there's a hill that cuts down. We're at the bottom. I've taken picture the last time that they, uh, flushed the, would you pass it around, please? They flushed the hydrants and that was just flushing the hydrants. Uh, so we have eighteen feet, six-inch wide street. They're flushing the hydrants and we have an almost one lane through the middle, uh, that that will be how we get to in front because we're closing the line. So that's okay because we still have the one-way up at the top. That's cool, but as you can see, we have a drainage issue. So this is just showing is that there's coming, the water's coming down the hill to us from all those houses. And I'm pretty sure they didn't come and look at our house. So they don't know. It's not just coming from that field. Those are coming from in front of our house, down the road, and it goes down between us and the Bogos. And it also goes back there. So I'm pretty sure that they didn't take that into consideration. They, you know, we've been told, will they take topography into consideration? Well, come, come sit at my house next time it rains and we'll see if they're taking topography in consideration. Um, because I know, uh, Loma Vista, Gary, to talk to her, she wants the water. And he found a way to get the water to him. They have not reached out to her. She wants the water. We've offered to help get the water over there to her. They have not done anything to help get it over to her. So, uh, again, doctor's chief, but to be a good neighbor, uh, I'm concerned about these neighbors for a lot of reasons. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who's our third public comment?
Kathy Martin.
Kathy, come on up.
My name is Kathy Martin. I live at nineteen oh five South Princeton. I am on the south side of what will be nineteenth street. Um, I was at the October public hearing. I've expressed my opinions with planning committee also, but, um, we asked that we have a privacy fence. I work shift work, so I sleep during the day while they're going to be driving right by my house, doing their construction. Um, I asked for a privacy fence and have not heard anything of it. I asked for our driveway to the north to be reinstalled. Um, in February, they sent us an email. They said, you can have that driveway, but it's going to be at your cost, not at ours. We currently have our driveway out the north. A previous owner paved that driveway. Um, so there was some sort of an agreement with the Bogos when they owned the land in order to get us to pave into their land, uh, a driveway to the north. It's always been there, so I don't know how about when. It was a previous owner. Um, we reached out to them in March and they did not return anything until after the June planning commission, when they said that they had talked to us and we publicly commented there saying they have not talked to us. We do have a meeting today at five thirty with them. However, this stuff is not resolved and it needs to be resolved before you guys go and approve this final plat. That's, uh, my concern is that you guys will approve this and then they'll say, oh, it's approved. Hands off. Um, but it has not been approved and they have not talked to us verbally until we requested a verbal conversation tonight. Um, and that is my concerns. The fencing, that nineteenth of Princeton is a terrible, terrible intersection. I know it's not safe. I know we've expressed this. I see people go the wrong way all the time. I, I see accidents. I seen a blue car turn around on my driveway like three days ago because they turn and they go the wrong way. I don't know if the sign needs to be bigger, needs to have flashing lights on it, but it's a one-way going the other way. Um, there's accidents all the time. They have them further down and therefore they're not attributed to nineteenth and Princeton. But most of those accidents are people going the wrong way and then they hit head-on, um, coming up. Um, but I suggest that this be postponed and how we get, I don't know if they've talked to the Sparks. They live on the north, but we don't even have a conversation with them until today at five thirty.
Thank you. Jenna, I do have a couple of questions now, uh, after hearing some of the comments. Was, do you know if, if there was a conversation that the, uh, planning commission did have about that privacy fence on the north side?
Oh, they did discuss the, um, what was going to be able to, to happen there. They were concerned. Her same concern was how do we, uh, make sure that these things happen, that they do have their driveways and have the access to their property? Um, I have followed up with them and have been copying on emails that they, the exchanges that they've had with, with the develop, with the property owners. Um, and I know that it's something that they're in, in working on with them. So they did discuss in the meeting that they were willing to accommodate, uh, those owners and have the fences and the driveways. But, uh, that is a conversation between them, the, the property owners and the developers.
I certainly share their concern that if, uh, if something's not in writing about what they're going to do, not, uh, what they are going to do. Um, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward either, just because I've been, as Terry stated, I have been a contractor for quite some time and that's just how we conduct business, quite honestly. So I'd certainly like to get an answer from them and what their intentions are about that north privacy fence. Um, along with, I'm assuming that if we disrupt driveways and if they disrupt driveways and such, they're going to replace as, like, as you stated before, as, as they either are now or maybe even a better condition than what they are now.
I was under the understanding that they're working with, um, their legal team on drafting easement agreements and things like that. So, you know, there are things in the works, but I'm not privy to this at the moment. So.
May I? Yes, please.
I'm going to also mention that at the planning commission, um, meeting, we did have extensive discussion there. We've had some discussion afterwards. We've had discussion with the developers. And as far as what's related to the property that's being developed, um, the developers have been asked to go above and beyond and contribute towards the nineteenth street extension and the widening and all of those things. So that's really, some of those items are above and beyond what we would ask a normal development to do with an area. But because so many concerns came up at the beginning, they were willing to participate in some of those discussions. So as far as the stormwater goes, the existing stormwater issues are existing without the development. With the development, they have done on their, they have in their plan, um, and a plan to be able to accommodate and, uh, control any new runoff or drainage from their development. The existing stormwater problems are already there. Um, so if they can a- address the items that are coming from their development then, or any of that new water and drainage runoff, then, um, they've done what's been asked of them. Additionally, being able to divert any, um, existing water back to Loma Vista or any of those directions, that would not be a typically, wouldn't be a requirement on the developer because they're not contributing. Um, if their plan contains what they're contributing, then what's existing would need to go back. And there is additional cost in order to reroute that water. And so we need to consider that as part of what is the developer actually responsible for, for their development that they're putting in? And what is an existing issue that we need to try and address also? Um, also with the expansion and the, um, extension of nineteenth street into the development, um, we will have, the plans in front of you, but will that Dennis, or do you know if that has curb and gutter? Is that going to help to control any of that stormwater issue along nineteenth street?
Nineteenth street will have some curb and gutter, but that will not be a huge contributing factor to what has been talked about.
Right. Okay, okay.
Their contributing factor is the non-ervious within the development. So.
Yes, okay. Yes. Um, and then additionally, the, the conversation about, um, meeting with the neighbors and the conversations that they've been asked to have. The, um, initial meeting with the neighborhood was a, a suggestion that we made and that, that meeting was held here. Um, and so there, there might've been some confusion that that was a city meeting versus a development meeting. Um, but they did hold an initial meeting. I don't have with me or know who all showed up to that or what those conversations were at that time. And I'm not even going to pretend that I know what the conversations have happened between now and then. However, I do know that the two property owners that are most impacted along nineteenth street, which is the entrance into the new development, um, that would have their driveways removed and/or altered because of the widening and/or the construction, um, into there. Those are the two properties that we have asked for them to have direct conversations with and to make sure that they're made whole on, um, the access to their properties. Those conversations have happened this week. Um, initial conversations, they were done in writing. We were privy to those conversations, or at least the initial, um, um, information that went out to them asking for the meeting. But as she stated, she's got, has a meeting with them this afternoon. Um, it's not um, necessarily a requirement that we would normally go in and follow up on that has to be done before the final plat is recorded. Something we talked about and it was a concern and conversation at planning commission was, how do we ensure that that is going to actually happen for those two property owners on nineteenth street? And we talked about, um, additional ways to make sure that that happens. We could possibly insert it into some sort of a separate agreement with them. Um, there was questions about whether or not it belongs in a development agreement. It's not really infrastructure that belongs in the development agreement. That's really focused on public infrastructure. Um, so we can still explore ways, um, that we could tackle those. And for some reason, this isn't finished before we get to the point of them being able to even move ahead with the project. Um, the final plat and approval of the final plat is only one step. Um, it won't be filed until a development agreement and those other things are taken care of if we decide that those are something that an agreement would be needed for. Um, as far as the stormwater issue for the Harrises, they are not one of the affected properties for the street widening. Um, so those are the only two that we've had, we've asked them to have conversations with directly. Um, asking for a privacy fence, um, for that property is something that they can have conversations directly with the developer, but that's not a requirement of the development itself. Um, that's there in the neighborhood, that they are not a neighboring property that would be directly affected by that street widening itself. Um, so other than that, I want to give you a little bit of feedback from the planning commission and the things that have happened over the last week and if I missed anything, um, that you can think of. But do you guys have other questions besides that? I, I understand the concerns. I think that this is one of those, um, projects that we like that when, when people come to us and have those concerns and we want to make sure that we're addressing as much as we can. And we have areas in town that are going to need to be developed and they're not always going to be easy conversations and they're not always easy access. And we're always going to have a conversation about, um, drainage and runoff and those things. And we do have, we do rely on our consultants and our engineers and to give us good feedback. And, um, so that was what we have to go by here is what's been provided to us by our, um, consultants.
Well, I guess I, a question, I'll go ahead and make sure it might be the same question, but on, on the drainage issue, okay. So once the water leaves this property, is it not still their responsibility to where it goes into an approved drainage ditch? I just remember at the bank we built the detention pond and it went into an approved drainage ditch by the highway, which eventually goes to the river. At what point is developer responsible for the water that leaves the property?
It's a great question. I would suggest that when we review this next, I would ask that Dave Hamby be, be available so that he can address that with you. He's the expert, or at least his firm is the expert on the area, um, on that item. So I would want to make sure he's addressing it.
On that, do you know, or did someone know, along Princeton, what existing stormwater is in place? Uh, just a similar concern. I'm imagining myself living there. As we said, we're not rerouting the water. It's still coming to the same place, but there are a lot of impervious surfaces and we're essentially concentrating out of flow, called a spillway, you know, on a small scale, all of the water. I think it's our job as the city, not the developer. I think we should try to help divert that somewhere, is my mind. Um, you know, just figuring if there's twenty-five, two hundred fifty thousand dollar houses, this is six point two, five million dollars on our property tax base. I think it would be in our best interest to somehow try to get the water as to Princeton, if there's existing stormwater infrastructure that could handle that. Um, obviously not knowing what is in place over there. Um, but I agree that it's not really the, the developer's job once it leaves kind of their property to figure out exactly where it goes forever. Um, and I know we don't have a stormwater coordinator right now. Um,
Well, that wouldn't make any difference. There, there is no stormwater infrastructure along, you know, none whatsoever. Everything for the most part runs towards that creek, which is back across Loma Vista from where the Harrises live and where, where that development is now. You know, how that water gets away is, is a whole other question. And apparently there, well, I know that there is some water that gathers on the Harrison project. But at the same point in time, that water's been gathering there for a very long time. You know, and so figuring out how to move that water quite honestly, doesn't bother the developer, you know, the developers main concern is only concern, quite honestly, is only requirement is not to add to that. You know, and as Ms. Landis said, what we've got to go by is what the engineers come up with. as Ms. Landis said, what we've got to go by is what the engineers come up with.
And I'm guessing on those detention ponds, they're essentially a meter that the spillway, for lack of a better term, is high enough that it is holding water until a certain point and then it drains.
Designed, designed to hold water back and release slow. If it can be worked out with the developer and means the, the, the concept of that Mr. Harris spoke to is a great idea, but it's costly. You know, there's a cost associated with that, you know, and hopefully, you know, before this project's over, that can be worked out. Loma Vista wants the water.
Yeah.
They've won.
So more, a few more comments just to wrap up on our side. So um, this is a light tech project, so some of the funding is coming from the state of Kansas and there is a required timeline associated with that. And so as we move ahead, um, we would want to probably review this with you again on the tenth. I know that because of our canceled regular meetings, the next regular meeting would be July nineteenth. Um, if you are uh wanting to move in the direction of approval, I know the preference would be that we approve prior to the nineteenth, if at all even possible, but if not, we can have continued discussion. We can um do some follow-up and bring back um our city engineer to answer any questions that you have if you want, but we're happy to do whatever it is that the commission um however you'd like to proceed at this point.
Well, personally, I'd like to talk to the engineer on the tenth, if we could have a study session, talk about this again. So after that, I'm not sure if we're ready for the nineteenth or not, but I sure for sure, I'd like to talk with them on the tenth, if the other commissioners are willing to see that.
I certainly would like to have a conversation with uh Mr. Hamby on the tenth, for sure.
Okay, well, let's plan on that. Do you have any questions for the development team who is attending via Zoom?
Who's that?
Um, it. Who's on Zoom?
Who's on Zoom?
I think I have Micah. Can you?
Hey, guys, this is John. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Sean Smith with Belmont Development and Bear Hamilton, who I have to, uh, are my business partners. They're on as well. Uh, Micah uh is with our engineering firms on, Patrick burning with our development team is on as well, so we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
I, I would just add that um we, we will certainly do our part to be good neighbors. Um, we obviously have noted in the meeting, can't address every single item uh that everybody wants, but we will certainly do our part to make sure we're doing what makes common sense and is financially feasible to do. We uh as, as noted, we have a, a meeting later this afternoon to continue the conversation with uh Kathy and her husband. And uh, we've also had conversations with the Sparks, those are the two groups that are uh most impacted by this and I think we'll resolve it. So one thing I would mention, I think somebody mentioned earlier about they'd like to see something in writing or they would want something in writing. We're going to have easement agreements with both of these neighbors, um, so they do have some control over this process. We'll be signing an agreement that allows us, you know, temporary easements to do the construction as their properties are going to be uh temporarily disturbed. So we're more than willing and able to work through those and get everybody happy so we can sign those agreements and get, get a, a good understanding of what's going to happen and have it in writing. So that's not going to be an issue.
Do you have any questions for folks on Zoom?
Um, I, I don't know if it's for Melanie or for Mr. Smith, but um uh, my name is Sarah Taylor and um thank you for being here today. Uh, I'm wondering, um, Ms. Landis had indicated that um there's preference to have this um pass prior to the night or before the nineteenth. And so our next um available time to do that would be the tenth. Um, is there some kind of um deadline that you're up against or something that we need, because should understand better to why the nineteenth wouldn't work for you? Do you, it hurts to discuss them at our meeting?
Uh, as uh Melanie mentioned, this does have finance of K H R C. We actually uh had a deadline to start construction on July first that we've asked for an extension on and, and it's being accommodated. It's not a huge deal. So I, I'm just saying that to say, you know, the sooner the better for us and we can get started with construction because we do have a deadline to finish that is inflexible. Um, I, I don't think it's going to be a problem for us to push this another couple of weeks to get this worked out. We could have a planned session on the tenth and then uh get everything worked out. Commission meeting on the, I think I understood to be the nineteenth, that, that shouldn't have hurt our schedule.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any other questions for the developer? We have any other questions at this point? We do not.
Thank you.
If you have Mr. Hamby available to tend, we'd certainly appreciate that. Certainly, thank you. All right, that'll move us on to item B, which is twenty twenty-four budget overview with Director Landis.
Yeah, don't sit down.
Come on back. First one will be for auto memorial auditorium. Tiffany will come up also. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, while Matt's bringing up the PowerPoint, I might just kick off the conversation with uh, we started our budget process with reviewing our capital improvement program. Um, over a month ago, we came back and had a conversation about our special revenue funds and our community partner requests. And then we started into uh the rest of our budget work. And we um have discussed all of the utilities with you and now we're talking about the three funds that are directly impacted, um, three of city funds or our funds that we um control that are impacted by mill levy and abhorrent taxes. And so we thought it would be a good idea to, to have a conversation about those three funds at one time. And then also talk a little bit about our valuation that has come in, but maybe not necessarily dive into all of the details related to that because we have not had a, a chance yet to really figure out exactly where each one of these funds would land. And instead, wanted to kind of have a conversation with you first and make sure that we knew that we were headed in the direction that you really wanted to go. So um, the very first fund that we wanted to uh bring to you is the OMA. And that's why Tiffany is here to kind of help us have this conversation. The primary revenue sources for this are, you know, ticket sales and abhorrent tax. And they have some motor vehicle taxes that come in as well. Um, there's some other miscellaneous small revenue sources, but those are the main ones. And so this fund operates on a pretty small budget overall. And uh with not a lot of opportunity to raise additional revenue outside of um the ticket sales that they have or the, the value of those tickets and the ability to um generate attendance at all of those ticketed events. And over the last couple of years, I know you all are aware of it. Um, they've done great work to make sure that we bring new and uh bigger events, I think overall to the OMA, which has helped to generate more ticket sales. But it also costs a little bit more to bring bigger acts to the stage, so. Um, that's what you see in the budget overall. In addition to for this year, you um, we had a conversation about improvements for the OMA and you approved a bond issue last year, that part of that, the um, that bond issue goes towards improvements at the OMA and those are about to get kicked off here in the next couple of months. And so all of our forecasts that we've provided to you really reflects what we anticipate happening um with expenditures over time, um, keeping in mind that we still have regular annual improvements that have to be made to the building. We still have um HVAC systems that are older and, and need um maintenance and repairs. And we have a lot of moving parts and pieces behind the stage that need um addressed and all of those things come together in this budget. Um. This is just an overview of our forecast and in each of our funds, we do actually forecast out five years beyond this. And so we've done some work on what that looks like. Our initial comments to this internally have been, we don't like necessarily where the ending fund balance is headed and that we're going to continue to do some work on our end to try and identify ways to um either put back into the fund or be able to generate more and additional revenue sources or to be able to reduce any of our expenditures any way that we can. And so when we bring to you a budget that includes mill levy dollars or abhorrent dollars, uh, we're typically asking you for a level mill levy when we talk about that because those additional revenues really do help to offset the new and additional expenditures that come in for an operational fund like this. And so what you see in their proposed for abhorrent taxes is really um more focused on a, a level mill levy for the auditorium itself. Um, but we will have more conversation later about what direction you want to see each of those funds go overall. So this might change based on that conversation. Also, we have put in the C I P, an item for the, the fly loft and um that is all dependent upon if the dollars are available, if there's nothing else extravagant that happens and expenditure wise every year, um, all of those larger expenditures like that, we always hold off and make sure that there's funds available to actually do it. Our target fund balance is typically twenty percent of your total expenditures and that's what you see at the very bottom there. Um, a- again, our target fund balance is higher than where we are proposing right now for the end of the year for twenty twenty-four and our estimate even for twenty twenty-three. So we do still have some work to do internally on our operations and our expenditures. So with that, that's all I really have to add and Tiffany can talk a little bit about.
And I'll, and I'll just add to the twenty twenty-three um ending fund balance. We have some very large shows that are coming up at the end of this year that we anticipate is going to put us in a little bit better position that is initially on there right now. Um, and I can't announce who they are, but we anticipate that these shows will be um huge for not only our budget, but for the auditorium as a whole. We're also taking the next couple of months as we go through this remodel process, um, we'll be close to the public, July, August and September, but we're reevalu- reevaluating all of our rental fees, our ticket processing fees, our concession stand fees, so that we know that we um have been very conservative with those in the past and it's time to take a, a good hard look at them and increase those to meet what everybody else in the community is, you know, at least get to where they're at as well, so. Um. But I am open to any questions if you have any questions for us.
How many full-time employees do we have?
Two.
Two, and then, and then when an event comes up, you hire to help.
We have two full-time employees, um, and then two part-time soundbite technicians that work on an as-needed basis. Uh, and then we backfill everything else with volunteers.
Okay.
Me about the um downward projection of the reserves for future projects, it's about sixty thousand dollar downward.
Yeah, so I, this, this is where that um, where those expenditures just outweigh your revenue overall. And this is one of those funds where if you want to generate more revenue, the only additional revenue besides evaluating your ticket fees and whatnot will come from an increase and to the mill levy directly associated with the OMA. Um, other than that, we have really taken a hard look at every revenue line that's in there. There really isn't a lot that, that's generated from, and then also the expenses other than the one capital improvement, which actually we may be able to uh take grant funding for. We don't know that yet, but we could uh possibly find a grant for that. Um, other than that, we don't have large increases to our operating budget, our expenditure budget. Um, it's pretty much.
I think the only thing we can decrease is event fees. I did increase that quite a bit. Event fees, hoping that these large shows that we have this fall will roll into booking larger shows for next year, so. So and now I'm not going to book those until we know where these other ones roll out.
Yes.
So they're really big too this fall, huh? Really big. Taylor Swift, is it? I was thinking with all of the Black Panthers around, that was LL Cool J.
We wanted to do something really large once we, you know, had the remodel done. We wanted to be able to kick something huge off in there, so.
Good job.
I do anticipate it will affect us positively for this fund balance.
Do you have any questions for Director Landis or Tiffany or Oma? Thank you.
All right, the next one that we had to discuss is our debt service fund. And um this fund is it doesn't want to be discussed. No one likes to talk about that anyway, so it's not as fun. There we go. Well, maybe you. So the debt service fund is um really the revenue sources in here are um debt, uh, abhorrent taxes and transfers from the other relevant funds for your debt. So what I really wanted to focus on here um was to talk a little bit about what actually um is covered for the property tax um debt. So out of the total debt that we have, and this is all the years, not just one year of payments, obviously, but thirty million dollars in total debt. Um, fifteen percent of that is related to property taxes. Um, three million of that is related to the bond issue we just issued last year. And then the rest of it will pay off in the next five years that's related to property taxes. So uh, right now, that's about six hundred and eleven thousand dollars that's outstanding, that's funded by abhorrent taxes. Oh. All right. Um, so uh, the rest of the revenue that comes into that fund. Sorry. So the rest of the revenue that comes into the fund directly offsets the expenditure for that year. So if you have an electric um debt, then we are transferring in the exact amount for that year's debt payment from the electric fund. So when we looked at those utility funds and you saw transfers out that year, they're coming into the debt service fund. And so they're paying for their own debt uh for those utilities for, um, there's some for special streets and um there's a variety. There's the so- the special sales tax for proximity park, for the wastewater projects. So wherever that money is generated from, it's transferred into as a revenue and then the expenditure is budgeted to make the debt payment. So um, I guess with that, this is what that looks like. And this is a whole lot of numbers, but uh the, you know, the total transfers that are coming in, um the total amount of I don't actually have it by year, how much of that is related to the property taxes, but the, the taxes would cover just the remainder of the amount that's for the debt that doesn't have an associated revenue source. And right now, I'm going to actually just tell you, that's the, the rest of the coast um special assessment district that pays off this next year in twenty twenty-four. And we had reserved money aside for that anyway, so that's actually being offset as we transfer that in. As you see down here at the bottom, we had reserved that um coming in from the sale of those properties and from the land bank. And then we had a portion that had been decided to be a um public offset for the Northeast Water Tower. The air, there's some airport improvements in there. Um, and the tea hangers that were originally built. So all of those items pay off it before twenty twenty-nine or by twenty twenty. And then the remainder is just what we did for the building improvements last year. Do you have questions on how the debt service fund works or?
There's any questions for Director Landis?
No, no. All right. Okay, so um, the last one is the, is the most fun fund that we have, and that's our general fund. Our general fund um accommodates all of your service-related alternative utilities, your service-related um operations, so everything from your administration to your fire, police, streets, parks, you name it, they're all listed as expenditures and revenue sources in our general fund. So when we, when we look at those screens, all, we've gone through every line, line by line, through everybody's budget and through So when we, when we look at those screens, all we've gone through every line, line by line through everybody's budget and through. Every revenue source that's available in there and we've um projected, you know, our sales tax fairly conservatively, but. Um, well, within a decent range for what what you would expect to come in for sales tax. We have court revenues. Um, we have permits and fees, all of those items come in. We also have. Motor vehicle taxes that come in, which those are based on an estimate that's provided by a county, the county. And then our ad valorem that's also provided, those estimates provided by the county as well, but through assess valuation. So we did just get that notice um on the fifteenth or around the fifteenth. From the county, our motor vehicle taxes came in or our estimates came in around the same time, so we've used that to put together a. Partial forecast, but we weren't ready to put that in front of you yet because we did want to have a conversation. So. Our assessed valuation came in at nine point one percent, uh just under nine point one percent over last year. Um, there's been some adjustments made to it for the valuation of the golf course. We've had some internal discussions about. The increase to the value of that property, and so they went ahead and reduced the valuation overall that they sent to us. To make sure that we weren't over budgeting for those taxes to come in. And then. Um, we've applied that back to this fund and we've talked internally and your departments have done a great amount of work on. I'm just going through their operating budget um and what they need to run their regular operations, but also what do they need in order to continue those operations? At the same level and just like every year, they've put together request forms and they've got, we've got a laundry list of things that have been asked for. Um, and mind you, we, when we put this together, we do not, um, you know. The answer a lot of tough questions. Do you need that? What is it? What does that vehicle look like? Is it a limestone vehicle or can it last a couple more years? Um, can you look that along a little bit longer or is it something that's absolutely necessary? Can you share? Um, are, is there anything else that that is an option? And so all of those conversations have been had and ultimately in the end, as a group, we've decided that the one thing that we've been talking about all along. That really needs to be funded first is the results of the compensation study. We did it for a reason. We know that we have to have, um, we. We know we need to have a further conversation about that when it's ready to go, but we don't know what the number is and that makes it really, really difficult for all of us because. We um, we put in a number into our estimate of five hundred thousand. We don't know if that's close. We don't know if it's under, we don't know if it's over, but what we do know is that it doesn't leave a lot of room. For anything else to be added to the existing base budget for next year right now. And there's one other small change we made. In past years, we have not budgeted for. Our planned beginning fund balance for next year. So we typically always want to target around two million dollars. We'd love to grow that every year if we can. And what we, what we anticipate coming at ending the year with is typically around that. We really try to target that to make sure that stays fairly consistent. What we've never done is budgeted for that two million and so technically what you would do is say, well, this is. What your revenue is going to be, this is what your expansion, you're going to take that two million off the top so you can guarantee. That two million is going to start your year next year. Instead of what we've done is waited, um. You know, we, we have lots of internal conversations and we wait a little bit longer at the beginning of the year to make purchases. We uh and by the time we get to the fourth quarter, we suspend our purchases for a little while just to see if we know exactly where we're going to land. And it makes uh operations difficult, especially now in the time where. If you order a vehicle, you may not get it for eighteen to twenty-four months or longer on some of those items. And so you need to be able to know ahead of time what it is that you're actually. Going to be working with next year. It would make things a lot easier. So we did not put together a plan. To pull the full two million out because the reality is most of our budgets return anywhere from. Five to twenty percent at the end of the year anyway, depending on what their budget looked like, depending on how many vacancies they had. That's not what they. Plan to do or want to do, but it's the reality for a lot of our departments. So. A lot of that, those dollars will roll over as beginning fund balance anyway. So we did put into our plan a million dollars to be budgeted out of that two million. Um, in hopes that we would still, not in hopes that, we will then make sure that we're rolling over at least the additional one million dollars at the end of next year. Um, or at the end of this year. So once we do all of that, it doesn't leave a lot of room for anything else. So. All of that to say and mostly to explain to public listening or anyone else that might not know what we've done internally. To say that uh what we. Will share with you is all of the things that um we know that are needed to continue operations, but what we'll probably propose to you is something less than that. And the conversation then becomes, how do we want to address the just the difference between. A level mill levy and level property taxes or no increase um for that valuation. And so. That's the conversation uh really and. Nope, okay, I didn't put that in there. In the memo, I I kind of outlined out for you um. Kind of an explanation of what those three options might look like. And we would really like to have some feedback from you. So a revenue neutral rate, as you know, it maintains the cap. On your current spending and it really gives you uh no additional capacity for anything further in your operations. And it also doesn't allow you to take advantage of any new growth in your community. So any, anything new that might have come onto your tax role. Is not considered as part of that um that number. Um, so that's one option and it's something that we've been. Evaluating for the last two years since this new um concept came into play. And then also we have the, the idea of using a flat mill levy. So whatever you levied last year um would be what you levy again for this year and that captures then. The full amount of the assessed valuation growth. So in this case, it would be a nine point one percent increase in the assessed valuation growth. Um, right now, and these are just, just real. He's all me to these numbers. So, but just to give you an idea, it's about twelve thousand dollars. The difference between this year and last year is about twelve million and you divide that by a thousand, so it's about twelve thousand. One hundred and fifty dollars per mil that you would have in dollars to work with for your total overall budget and that's helpful at all, so. Um, it would generate about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars if you were to use our forty-six mils from last year. Change your twelve thousand dollars per mil. So that would give you that much capacity for all of your increases, such as personnel increases, comp study. Anything that um went up in costs that we had no control over, any of your outside utility expenditures, fuel, all of those things. Um. Those are again, just some round numbers to give you some idea. And then there's also another option, which is pick something in between and. For us, that would be capturing um the hundred percent of the revenue that's generated from new growth or. Um, new construction, the change in property values, anything that we've um. Converted from residential to commercial, commercial to residential, always changes and and zoning. Um, and then also it reduces the impacts of the increased valuation assessments back to your property. So with that being said, the middle ground, our new improvements was about two point four million or just under that. And so that's about only twenty percent of that total increase. So um it's a two percent growth overall in your expenditure budget. Which still doesn't quite get you there um for anything outside of. The, you know, trying to find at least the compensation study impact and and maybe. Maybe something else. We'll, we'd have to decide what that will look like. So those are the three options and. We wanted to get your feedback as to where you'd like to land because we'd like to put together a budget that really tries to um accommodate that. And we'll go back and have more conversation about what those exact numbers look like. And right now we have some very round numbers just from. The conversations internally what they've asked for, so. Brian, do you have anything additional that I want?
Just I think the clarity for uh that reduced fiscal impact on existing property owners where. We're capturing the new and there'll be a percentage increase over. What's currently levied, so that way it's not uniformly applied to all property owners and we're softening that increased assessment that I think. Most of our, our neighbors have experienced in their uh valuations and so i- it's. It's not keeping it constant, which would be ideal, but it does significantly reduce or lessen that impact on.
This new subdivision we talked about earlier, that's not in residential or the. Uh, neighborhood revitalization, are they? I mean, it won't. Okay. I'm just thinking about when we see the hundred percent, I mean, we do have some home, new home construction in the neighborhood revitalization, so we wouldn't be able to get as much from those, obviously.
Yeah, I'm glad you, you asked that, actually. I meant to, so I mentioned that. So in our N R P or our neighborhood revitalization district, the valuation. That is subject to rebates is just over three million dollars.
Okay.
So three million off of the top of that valuation is what would be subject to a portion of the rebate. Remember, it's not all the same percentage because they're in differing years. Across um, you know, for each property that's in that program right now. So I can't tell you exactly what that looks like as I don't. But, um, but yes, at least uh. Everyone in that program would be at a differing rate, but yeah, about three million dollars.
Some of them are aging out too, so they'll be fully taxed here soon. Thanks for the ten years ago that the commissioner voted on that. I guess, and my thinking on this whole thing too is, is last year we did not. Reduce our bill levy, we stayed saying what we were. The other two taxing entities reduced theirs and I've heard about that and. It may sound like more like form over function, but I think we're going to have to look at reducing our mill somehow, some portion just to be able to. Uh, be able to walk through Walmart without being attacked.
Well, one thing I think that's something to consider when you look at that's the aggregate tax burden. And and we are the.
I, I know. And I hear you and I know that.
That folks see and deal with day to day.
Right, but I don't think maybe some people just look at the mill levy from the previous year, what is it? And with the higher valuations, I think some people are expecting lower mill levies in all the taxing entities this year. That could just be my opinion.
You're absolutely right, though. I'm sure Skidmore, I mean, it is a, it's a point of education. Every single time you get to have that conversation with somebody. I generally like bury a copy of my, my personal property and just have it on my phone. I'm like. The city, this is, this is where the city belongs and everybody else around there, we're, we're a part of this.
Good idea. And and you know, the city provides. A lot of additional value-added services that benefit other taxing entities. Um, you know, a case in point, you know, we were to deal with the um. Um, the municipal pool, baseball fields, all of that are, are very costly infrastructure items. That the city at large pays for. Um, and then provides to these other jurisdictions for operations at no cost. So. Um, we're, we're paying out a significant number and a significant dollar amount to. Other agencies and other, other jurisdictions that. That it's in the, it's the right thing to do for the community. And so I think it's, it's one of those things too, where we have to make sure that as we've often talked about. Telling our story and how we tell our story is, is all the more crucial um this time of year more so than. You know, the most.
And I realized to the double taxation, being located in Franklin County and also in Ottawa, there's some, that'll never end as far as that discussion goes. I know sort of go way back with that discussion. Years ago, then we did have one time, somebody, I don't, it was Scott Bird, what presented something that showed how many. Uh, dollars for hundred thousand in the house of what.
What it was possible if you were going to pay for private.
Pay for all those things. And I, I thought, yeah, that kind of brought it into real dollars for people to see, oh, well. This is a pretty good deal we've got here and I don't know if there's a formula he used or if there's any history on what he, what he left behind, show how to figure that, but. That's a good communication tool, I thought.
Yeah, and we can, we can um. Do that certainly for our next conversation when we talk more about the actual mill levy presentation. Absolutely.
Commissioners, do you have some input for Director Landis on how you feel about the three options she's given us? Well, Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore kind of spread some of his. Well, all five, Director Landis, as I, as I've talked to you a couple of times before, um, you know, last year, as Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore says, we, we, we. We uh, we kept a flat mill levy, uh but certainly gained because the, the assessments went up. Um, so in the. Uh, the province side, we, I re- raised taxes, uh which we didn't. We just went along with the assessments that were out there. Um, I am in favor of certainly the reduced fiscal impact, uh but I also know this is a business that we're running here too. So I want to make sure that that would be the direction I would like to hit. Uh, the reduced fiscal impact on existing owners. Um, and then if we have to adjust accordingly, you know, then we need to do that. Um, the flat mill levy would certainly be nice. I mean, that's a nine percent increase, um but I know there's a lot of hardships going on right now with inflation and. Uh, interest rates and all sorts of stuff and I just don't want to be an added burden if not necessary.
I would, I would agree on that. I think I'd be intrigued to see what it historically is year over year. I feel like nine percent, I'm pretty staggering compared to inflation and. Obviously with, and the average person takes home, I don't think people are getting a nine percent raise. Um, I know we didn't. Um. So I think I'm much more on that kind of board as well, you know, kind of softening the blow. As best we can, kind of seeing what options there are on that. Um, and then kind of looking, you know, kind of building up from there, I guess, for like a better term because. I think that nine point one percent across the three taxing entities is definitely going to. Be impactful to a lot of people. Um, you know, I see my escrow statements I'm preparing, you know, from last year and I think. People are going to start seeing those things come through. Um, like the mayor said, I think. Thinking about the people that we're serving as well as, but also keeping in mind that we are essentially a business and have to be able to maintain. A lot of services, um but I would kind of like to see that and then kind of work up from there.
I'm glad you mentioned uh what it's been in the past years because I think traditionally had been um ranging between two, three, five, five and six percent. Was the biggest valuation increase you'd seen for a really long time. And then all of a sudden we jumped to ten percent. And now we're at nine percent and those, we don't ex- I wouldn't expect those to stay there forever, but we all know that sometimes. Valuations are cyclical, but uh, you know, we have to be able to plan for being able to maintain operations going forward. Uh, with a lesser increase in the future as well, uh potentially. And so we do need to try and level some of that out. You know, just internally as far as operational costs go, so um but, but, but historically they have not been as high as they have the last two years.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, what, what I think we can do is craft a couple of scenarios uh in the vein of the reduced fiscal impact. Some of those on the low end would, would see or could, could potentially see without having the, the. Certain pages and playing with the numbers in front of me. It would be difficult to say that it would absolutely, but you could see with the increased assessment. One of the scenarios that we can provide is the least punitive on. Service delivery that would reflect a decrease in the mill levy. Because what you're doing is, is that assessed valuation will cause, if you're increasing it and capturing it. That mill levy would drop a little bit, so it's just, we can see what that would look like and get that presented. And if it's um something that, that we want to continue to pursue, we can certainly do that then.
Well, that and coupled with our aggressive approach toward rate increases on our utilities, I think that's something we've kind of been relaxed on and now we're. Taking a forward step on those. And so that would kind of ease the, yeah, the budget somewhat as well. Uh, with what we're doing in the utilities. So I'm glad we're doing that. We needed to for a long time.
Um, I appreciate really the conversation that we're having across the board here. I did talk to city manager, I'm so caught about. Um, when you think that the information from the wage study will be available, do you think that's going to be available?
I, I don't know. Yes, I was going to say it was a possibility.
Uh, middle around. Around like the week of the twentieth. So after.
So I mean, my concern this is that um, I, I absolutely mean because we're all, we're all taxpaying entities around this table too. Um, but uh, my concern is that we take care of our employees too and people um choose to work in the city of Ottawa and they. Um, if they choose to work for the city of Ottawa, um they shouldn't have to, um, we should pay them a fair wage. Um, so if we and I, this is, is not the first time we've had a wage study and I think. Mike, were you a part of the last wage study too? I was like, yeah. So we've, I've gone through a wage study before and, and I think that um. It's important to make sure that we take care of our employees and that they are um. They're compensated for the good work that they do. And I'm not talking about um. You know, making anybody millionaires by doing it, but just barely compensating them. So my concern would be, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm absolutely fine with. you know, making anybody millionaires by doing it, but just barely compensating them. So my concern would be, I'm I'm fine with, I'm absolutely fine with you know, capturing the growth, new proper or new construction, any change in use. But also kind of remembering that we do need to look at making sure that our wages are are comparative to other who places around here and that we keep our employees because it costs a whole lot more to bring new employees than it does to retain. So we have great employees.
Oh, Commissioner Keller, I appreciate saying that because just a few months ago, you know, Chief Mathias was having an issue with keeping a whole shift um that was gonna go outside of town. And I'm sure anybody watching and anybody around this table would not like that to happen. Um that it when they call nine one one and they need them to show up, that they'd say, sorry, they went to Gardner. And that's what I meant by, you know, this is a business, we have to run a business. You know, the employees are a number one asset. So we certainly have to to pay them a a a a good wage to keep them here. So.
Hi, can I, this is Michelle Wap, HR Director. Can I make a couple of comments about the compensation study? Okay, um sorry, I'm technical difficulties, I'm working remotely. Um I do have an email from the uh this firm that's doing our study and uh we will be meeting with Victoria McGrath and some of her colleagues uh here in July um to review the findings. And I'm sorry if I'm repeating what you said earlier. Um and there'll be some back and forth and we're looking at, I think, September early September with a kind of a what it might look like, but that's that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you.
And I might also add, um you know, we don't know what that number is. And so the number we've picked is really, it could be low, it could be high, we don't know. But when you consider wages, I think it's also important to note that that number that we've chosen to put in there is not all direct salary. There are direct costs associated with increasing a salary. So uh for every one dollar, um you might have an additional thirty five cents to fifty cents for each one dollar that you raise it just in um the payment into capers and for payroll taxes. Um so the in the amount that you contribute towards a benefit like health insurance doesn't change, but all the other numbers change for every ten to two increase of a wage. So that would need to be included in there as well. So that's not a full salary increase number um at all. And you know, we I guess we've recognized that you could be really wrong on that number. And so either way, in in either direction. And so if it were to come out to be more than that, we're gonna have to look at ways to potentially stare stop that in to reduce that reserve number that I've had planned to input in there. We have to look at current year operations. How can we roll over more of a beginning fund balance? There's more conversation to be had at that point. Um if for some reason we've overshot it and we're really close and we don't need those dollars, we have a lot of other requests that we aren't even presenting to you right now um that are all valid needs across all of the departments. We had personnel requests for new positions. We had equipment and vehicle requests um which are typical um items that you see every year, um even to um even to increase security fours on our I T side. Some of those things are, you know, right now they're just kind of hanging in the balance. Not that those aren't important, if we're just gonna look for other ways to fund those things. So we have more conversations to have about the details behind it, but as far as putting together a proposed final budget for you to consider, um that's that's what we're looking at internally. So what we'll do is at the July tenth and the July seventeenth is our next opportunity to talk about this um in more detail. And so we'll bring to you um on the tenth, the library will discuss with you their budget proposal. And we'll continue with more conversation about what that mill levy looks like. Um potentially after that, we have an an opportunity to then talk again on the seventeenth. But on the nineteenth, which is your next regular commission meeting, we will need to consider a um adoption of a resolution that would exceed the revenue neutral. I think that's a requirement under the process. And then also, we would we would ask for you to give us traction notice the public hearing to the public. Um and on July twentieth, the following day is our deadline to submit all of that information to the county. The county then will go ahead and uh the county will go ahead and um send out notices to the whole community, actually across the the county. So they're issuing notices in all kinds of varieties to different people, um depending on the different taxing agencies. Um so everybody in the city limits will get a notice from the county that says what the public hearing date is for us and for every taxing entity that impacts them. And as well as what our proposed mill levy is. So we need to have a good idea of what exactly we're proposing. And then at that point, we could go down, but we can't go up. And so we wanna have a really good idea after the next two discussions where we like plan. And then we have a kind of it's kind of a wait and see after a waiting not a waiting period, not a wait and see um until August or the first meeting in September, when we can actually hold a public hearing and then adopt a budget. But we have to give them a whole time to get those notices sent out. So that's the reason for the delay and timing there and then
One thing on the valuation, that nine point one percent increase, that's total valuation. So that would be new. You know, if things were on neighborhood of I neighborhood revitalization and came off that has increased the tax for like
The nine percent is total.
Total growth.
So I haven't subtracted all that. I'll I'll provide that to you at the next, so you can kind of back into it, kind of see how I um scare stuffs up to that increase. Anything else?
All right, I don't see as a review of the city ordinance prohibiting fireworks. Chief Mathias. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, my commissioners. This is a really a booming But uh so so every year on the twenty seventh of June through July first is the selling selling of fireworks. That doesn't uh limit the uh the use of fireworks, but that's when this the state allows the selling of fireworks. So tomorrow will be the first day of fireworks sold outside the city limits. It is illegal to sell fireworks inside the city limits. It is also illegal to uh use fireworks in city city limits of Ottawa. We all know people do. And that's uh that's just part of it. Uh I I think this this uh city code was adopted in nineteen eighty-two. And very little, if any update has been done to it since nineteen eighty-two. Uh I'm thinking there and we've tried to look at what caused this this code to be uh implemented. We can't find it if there was possibly a fire or something that uh sparked this, but So to be serious, uh you know, fireworks happen and we have been very, very lucky uh in the past several years not have any any fires uh because of fireworks. That that doesn't say injuries. We've had injuries in the past, some pretty significant. Uh but though we haven't had a fire in the last three years due to fireworks. So speaking of that, with the what current weather we are in, uh Wednesday and Thursday is gonna be a hundred and three degrees. Uh lack of uh moisture, uh we are preparing for a very active uh fourth of July season, if you will. Um last year in the state, there were two injuries, most of them were uh injuries to the hands uh and burns. But it was a forty-three percent decrease over the twenty-one. So the the state seen a significant decrease. And unfortunately, uh the the highest increase was uh from zero to three years old was the highest in injuries. So um unfortunately, that's that's not good. So if a lot of information, good information's on the Fire Marshal uh website, Kansas Fire Marshal's website, and we can put it on our city uh media and part part media. Any questions? Uh so people ask a lot of times with the I don't know what you call them, little dragons you start and they foam up or snakes, I guess. Uh currently, the way that the code is written, all fireworks are are prohibited in the city limits. So I think it's something we really have to take a look at. Uh and I've actually started looking at there's much cities and I think it's just time to look at that and see where we're at. It is difficult. We do have a we do have a city code and it sounds like four or three out there. Uh you know, we just that's just personally the way it is. I know Chief Winger can speak, but uh those folks answer a lot of uh fireworks calls. So and then we have buckets at both stations. If somebody has them, bring them in and we dunk them in the water and keep them. But that's what I have. Any questions?
On on that, you said it was nineteen eighty-two that made. Um I'm just curious on the sales. How many are within a quarter mile of city limits and what amount of sales tax money is literally on our doorstep? And nothing is prohibiting them from walking right, you know. I think everyone who buys fireworks drives right outside town comes right back in.
And and you can issue permits to sell as well. Yeah, so fireworks is really a a uh highly uh regulated industry. Uh Fire Marshal's office is very busy this time of year. Each stand gets inspected. Uh all their fireworks has to be permitted. And so there's it's it there is a substantial workload for the Fire Marshal's office currently. But you're right. I mean, this, I I would hate to guess how much money spent on fireworks within let's say a hundred yards of the city limits. I mean, some of those are right next door, so um it needs to be looked at. It really does.
Would you like to look at it anytime soon or we?
Oh, no, we would be No. I would say not. I mean, to do it, to do it justice, barely I uh would
No, I mean, I'm not for this year, but review it sometime throughout the year. I think that's fair.
Here's just that we're gonna have some a gap in our timing with budget.
Yeah, I'll I'll go to work on that and get some
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other puns or anything there?
You had an opportunity to
All right, comments for our city manager.
Uh I'll keep it brief. Um utility operations, we had our electric crews continuing their uh generator maintenance and prep throughout peak generation season. Uh fiber service extension uh for South Gate uh was completed and now the uh city's newest the fiber customer. Uh Public Works, their crews were focused on alley maintenance and mowing operations and they'll be focused on pothole patrol and uh and uh the pavement preserver, the pavement project, there are twelve hundred maple and you might have seen them around today. Uh on the north side of Maine, north of the uh uh the the diet um doing some some heavy duty pothole patrol uh repairs there. Police Department will be uh on bike patrols this week, conducting random patrols. Uh the department's newest officer, Officer Donovan, reported to K L E T C for his fourteen week basic training academy. Uh want to thank Chief and his crew for hosting the chamber coffee. They not only showcased the newest fire engine, fire engine two. They highlighted operations and services provided not only to the citizens of Ottawa, but the surrounding communities. And then uh want to point out that uh I T secured us a new uh camera for the uh city commission study sessions. It's the owl three. It literally looks like an owl and it is a three hundred and sixty uh degree articulating camera. And then uh to give you an update on Friday, the city uh opened bids for the city hall security enhancement with Lloyd Builder submitting uh the only bid at a hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars with the construction start date of October one and a completion date of December thirtieth. Total project cost is uh two hundred and twenty-six thousand. That includes all the design contingencies, et cetera. And that was funded in twenty twenty-two A G O bond in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand. Uh want to remind everyone, if they're available, to be at Kansas Park tomorrow morning at nine A M for a special announcement. Uh remind you of the Ottawa City Band Concert tomorrow at seven thirty in City Park. And that they'll also be playing at eight o'clock at our Independence Day Celebration in Forest Park. And then our O M A concert series on Friday, June thirtieth at seven P M with Nambadoo, which is currently sold out, I understand. Um and then uh our Independence Day Celebration on Tuesday, uh July fourth from four to nine with fireworks after sunset. And that concludes my report. If there are any questions.
One question on that. Um I had a few people asking Public Works one, how do people contact for alley maintenance or getting their alleys looked at? Do they just call Public Works and just
Call Public Works. Contact the contact information is on the on the city's website.
And I believe they can do a service request online too.
Thank you.
Did we have an engineer's estimate for the uh city hall security enhancement?
Uh yes, we did. And that engineer's estimate was uh from the top of my head approximately a hundred and six-ish thousand, I want to say.
Not one oh six?
Yes.
So they were significantly
Uh yes. Which that has not been uncommon for projects with other municipalities as well across the board.
Any other questions for city manager? All right, comments for our city commissioners, Commissioner Graves.
Have no comment.
Uh just that everyone has a safe word and has a blast.
I will say that if Taylor Swift did the show, I do know the lyrics to Shake It Off.
I'm intrigued to see that.
In fact, I'm slightly embarrassed to even know what a song. But uh yeah, call me. And I I will
That's hardly that's hardly right.
And then I'll say the parks look great where there's a disco tournament Sunday. Went over to watch. There was even a guy from Phoenix here that, wow. But anyway, the park looks great and they had a good turnout, I think, and everything went well. So good, good job, guys.
I have no comments to add to what's already been said. Um a few announcements, please do uh join us at Kansas Park at nine A M tomorrow morning on the south end uh over by Fifteenth Street for a special announcement. Uh our study session and our regular meeting on the third and fifth have been canceled along with city offices are closed on the fourth of July. And our next study session, as we've mentioned a couple of times today, would be July tenth here at four P M. Anything else coming for the commission today?